On how can we kind of right-size the ship, provide a little more structure to it, so that we meet some specific goals and objectives, and that's what we'll talk about today. So we're going to talk a little bit about the mobility background, very briefly. I don't need to educate you on what this campus is like, but I would like to kind of share some thoughts on my perspective on that. We'll talk about the recommendations that we've suggested, and finally, we'll look at the proposed parking changes, which is, again, getting parking-specific after we've looked at the mobility picture. So as Bill indicated, there is definitely a great feel to this campus. Definitely feels, it has a great campus feel considering we're right in the middle of urban area, you've got many great environmental assets. Unfortunately, those things, with all the topographic relief here, means that any flat space on the campus pretty much has been built upon, and so when we talk about something like parking, we don't have easy answers for expanding parking. In fact, building anything new on the campus is going to be perhaps expensive because of the relief and the environmental aspects. So we have a constrained system, even though you've got 110 acres, which is really a good size, much of that has a large dollar value assigned to developing it. You've got about 2,000 parking spaces on the campus. There's a shuttle system that serves throughout, as you're aware, about seven or eight shuttle stops, and we have the LVR parking structure, which has about a third of the total parking in the campus is just in the LVR structure. So that's kind of the quick notes. My observation is that everything's about within a five-minute walk, except for the housing a little farther down Barkley. Otherwise, I would consider this very walkable. Five minutes will get you there. You may have to go through a building, but we're not really talking about significant distances for just getting the job done between campuses and so forth. So that's a big plus for this campus. And this simply shows all the different parking areas by the letters. There's parking adjacent to nearly every building. We also see the shuttle stops, which are the big red dots, and those shuttle stops serve the parking very well. So in general, you've got a campus that has parking adjacent to uses, and you've got the way to get around on good, bad days if you just want to ride. You've got a shuttle system that is running at a pretty good frequency throughout the campus. This is simply the overall parking supply numbers throughout the campus. We've got about half of the spaces designated to student commuters, about 20 percent to student residents, faculty and staff have about a quarter, and then there's a little bit of the other category, and that includes the off-campus spaces located on Roswell Road. There's 100 spaces out there for overflow purposes. So this is kind of the macro side of things, with, again, about half of the spaces are designated to student commuter. So just to briefly talk about parking conditions, and the university collects data on a regular basis to keep understanding what the trend lines are doing, and certainly, we can see in the data that things are tightening up over time, and so that comes out fairly clearly. There are no parking fees currently, except for the LVR residences have a few dollars in there per month for parking in the deck. I understand that the peak time of activity is Tuesdays and Thursdays, and so that's when every space is used. You're going to probably have to hunt. If you come a little bit later in the morning, you're going to have to look around a little bit before you can find your spot. So that's probably what we remember, and my work in parking perception is very important, and people will remember the few days that they could not find a parking space. I'm speaking very frankly here. Our perception of things are very much looking through the lens of what was my worst experience? That's fair. That's what we do as humans. But you look at this in totality, it probably is limited to a couple of days, like the Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it's probably fairly predictable. And if I guess you're a student, you kind of know when you've got to get on campus in order to get that spot, in order to be successful. As Bill mentioned, last fall, we were discussing about what would we actually do as far as our services, and it was clear that it was time to really get into what is the root issues and that kind of thing. And so as we, we expect that there is a moment here where we have to think about a change, and what that change is, is under discussion. But we've hit that point where we're at the threshold, and we need to think about what is the next step for the campus. So let's look at parking, and it's not just you finding a parking space. There's a couple of different things going on here. First of all, we all have our own internal balance of convenience and cost, and you go to the airport, you do that whether you park in short-term, long-term, way out with the sticks and take the shuttle in and that kind of thing. And we all have our internal motor, so to speak, about what that balance is between convenience and cost. From the university's perspective, there's a cost of providing parking. A surface space is going to be about 2,000 a bill. For a structure, you're probably starting at 15,000, and you're lucky if you can do it for less than 20,000 under today's conditions. And construction costs are pretty high right now. As you can imagine, in Atlanta, we've got a lot of construction going on. So costs are very significant right now on the construction side. A parking system isn't just about one big parking lot and everybody uses it. It's about adjacency. It's about using many different types of users, whether you're on the employee side, a student, if you have handicap needs, if you're a patient, a visitor to this place. So you've got to consider all of those different uses. And then there's a management and enforcement element that the university provides that represents a cost. And honestly, when I think about mobility, and this is go back to the mobility part of it, I think of the best way of doing business is providing a suite of options. Because like I said, as a society, we tend to change with respect to our mobility desires. I think that the next generation kind of definitely represents that. And so if we can provide a menu of options, that probably is going to be the way that we maximize our mobility and perhaps minimize our parking needs. And so as we look at this, you'll see in the recommendations, we definitely recommend looking more strongly at having the menu, the suite of mobility options. So some costs that we looked at during the study phase, and these costs are not insignificant. The first is the shuttle that's running around campus and also to the remote lot. It represents $350,000 a year. And the parking management, which is providing that service, the permits, enforcing the system, keeping it healthy, that's about a quarter value a year as well. So total of about 600,000. This isn't talking about maintenance of the lots or their eventual replacement or resurfacing and that kind of thing. This is just basically your typical budget annual items, just to have parking and mobility on the campus. So hopefully, that gives you a little bit of sense of the owner cost. You have your own sense of the user cost, right? Whether it's your convenience and so forth. This is the owner cost. And eventually, parking lots do need to be replaced, or in the case of a structure, parking structures need to be maintained too. So these costs are not factor. So I'd like to run through what I suggested to the university as, these are the functions we're trying to do. This is what our goals are, in terms of a system that's healthy and maximizing the system, minimizing the chance that people will not have an adverse experience or they need to expand the system. First of all, we want to maximize the utilization of the parking supply. That is, we want every space to be filled. We don't want a system where there's, for some reason, empty spaces because that completely is not aligned with the outcome there. We want to manage the peak day parking on campus. We could call that special events just as a kind of a term. It truly is, because you might have to do something different on that day. Maybe it's little, maybe it's more, in order to simply manage that peak parking, as opposed to having a situation where you're at 99 percent occupancy and hunting for that last parking space takes a lot of effort. We want to encourage distribution of the parking across the campus. That is, you could have a lot, that's the most desirable lot. I'll call that Lot F, which I think is probably the most desirable lot for a student commuter standpoint. And as the students probably know, that lot fills up faster. And so let's encourage a system where naturally, people are maybe parking farther out, instead of the big crush, 10 minutes before class in Lot F. Would that help the system? I think so. I think we're making a little bit of a dent. This is all very incremental. But we're trying to think about taking that top off the peak, just cutting the peak down a little bit, and getting the distribution of cars naturally going throughout the campus. And then certainly reducing the hunting time because of the other elements within these objectives. So that's probably the user perspective. This is what would help out those arriving to campus. And then from the university perspective, more specifically, let's try to do things that simplify enforcement. You don't want to make that really difficult, because then the system simply won't work that well. It would be great also to provide information about lots, and through technology these days, that's not that particularly difficult. Maybe that reduces the hunt time as well, because you might get information that tells you don't even think about going in that or the lot today, go somewhere else. We want to minimize costs, or the modifications of the system certainly makes sense. And then finally, we're getting back to the mobility discussion again. That is, let's provide alternatives. Let's provide a menu. Let's provide many different ways to reach campus, and if it doesn't require a parking space, that's really good, right? Because then we have our limited resource managed better, and maybe we have some kind of transactional benefit for those that don't use a parking space. That's not really that unusual in the mobility business. Any place that does have a limited supply of parking has to think about one aspect of the system favoring the other side, or some type of transactional benefit to those that aren't using the limited resource we call parking. So mathematically now, this is just the bins we have available to make progress, is you can add to the parking supply, and we talked about that as being a challenge, simply because of the developable weight. Then we could either modify the existing parking or reduce the parking demand. So that's to our end, right? And that's because that's really the focus of our recommendations, is to try to influence that parking demand and manage the supply in a way that meets our goals. So that's where I'm going to be spending my time as we go through recommendations. Now, whenever we have a limited resource, it's usually pretty shortly thereafter we're talking about cost. It's embedded in what we do whenever we get to a limited resource. So this is certainly applicable to Life University at this point, and that's our opinion as a consultant, is it's probably time, instead of having a free service, there may be a need to introduce cost into the picture to manage the demand. That's the law of supply-demand in Economics 101, and it applies to this business as well. Now, when we talk about cost, though, I think it's always important to have a no-cost option for those who are willing to walk a little farther or have special needs. We're going to provide a no-cost option. You don't have to blanket the system with costs for everyone, and you can see that as we go through this. And how do parking fees actually improve things? And that's where I just want to go through the rest of these items, because, again, it's supply-demand, and when you look at the residents, those folks could have a car, and certainly they have the right to have a car, but to have a car on campus when they don't really need it for the day-to-day going to school, fills a spot which doesn't allow a commuter to use that spot. So it's kind of a double man. So the first item here is, if you're a resident on campus, we would definitely want you to think about not having a car, or if you are, maybe there needs to be some skin in the game in order to pay for that space. So the on-campus is a benefit, but we need to think about how that affects the overall parking supply. For commuters, we want to reduce parking demand in this core of the campus. Now, whenever we have a limited resource, it's usually pretty shortly thereafter we're talking about cost. It's embedded in what we do whenever we get to a limited resource. So this is certainly applicable to Life University at this point, and that's our opinion as a consultant, is it's probably time, instead of having a free service, there may be a need to introduce cost into the picture to manage the demand. That's the law of supply-demand in Economics 101, and it applies to this business as well. Now, when we talk about cost, though, I think it's always important to have a no-cost option for those who are willing to walk a little farther or have special needs. We're going to provide a no-cost option. You don't have to blanket the system with costs for everyone, and you can see that as we go through this. And how do parking fees actually improve things? And that's where I just want to go through the rest of these items, because, again, it's supply-demand, and when you look at the residents, those folks could have a car, and certainly they have the right to have a car, but to have a car on campus when they don't really need it for the day-to-day going to school, fills a spot which doesn't allow a commuter to use that spot. So it's kind of a double man. So the first item here is, if you're a resident on campus, we would definitely want you to think about not having a car, or if you are, maybe there needs to be some skin in the game in order to pay for that space. So the on-campus is a benefit, but we need to think about how that affects the overall parking supply. For commuters, we want to reduce parking demand in this core of the campus. Or again, in the suite of things, here's another option for students to use on a regular basis or on a one-off basis because they find themselves in need of some kind of, maybe they carpool that day and now they need to get home and their carpool rider, you know, can't leave, of course. What kind of ways can we provide incentive-wise way to improve carpooling, but also give people an option to ride home separately if they have something come up where they simply have to leave? That would be called a guaranteed ride-home program. It's a very common thing. And it alleviates some of the stress of, okay, now I lock myself into a convenient option and I just need some more freedom. I need someone to give me an opportunity that's not going to be a full price or for free because this only happens, you know, once a month and once every two months, something on a regular basis. And then the final thing is, bike share programs are very common on university campuses. And in fact, when I look at the shuttle system here, I think, wow, you know, maybe a lot of that function could be replaced with a bike share. Because there's about three different nodes on campus. There's the core, there's the housing, and then there's the items on the west side of Parkway Circle. So, you know, maybe, you know, a little bike share is all you really need in order to improve travel times, walking times, whatever it might be on the campus. Maybe instead of the shuttle, maybe an additional shuttle, but certainly it's worth the conversation, mobility, to talk about some kind of bike share. Maybe that's even so that someone who lives in the residence halls can go bike to the near grocery store instead of having to, you know, own a car or beg a car or whatever they might do otherwise. There may be a demand on Saturdays or something like that. So that's the overall recommendations. And as you can see, we talked about mobility, right? We didn't just talk about parking. We're trying to get the whole picture taken care of in terms of what is the holistic approach to providing mobility on the campus? And now we're going to go into the parking segment. And I've already given an overview of those recommendations. Now we're going to talk a little bit more specifically. And again, I just want to reiterate, there's nothing done here. This is our opinion, looking at the campus, looking at the numbers, about what we think is about right for entry-level parking program that, again, is at a point where LeFevre University, it's meeting its point of parking. So first of all, we have something what's called a standard parking permit. And this would be applied to those residences on campus. If you want your car, if you live on campus, you need this permit. These parking spaces would be located in Commons. And the permit would give you the opportunity to park there. It's not a guaranteed space. It's simply you need the permit to be in that lot. This is very common. This isn't unusual thing on a university campus. It's giving you the opportunity. So if you stay out till 2:00 on Friday night, you're probably not going to find a parking space when you get back. So you're going to have to kind of manage that for yourself, right? That's going to be up to you. But if you need to unload your groceries and park there over the weekend, you'll be able to do that. Here's your opportunity. So we're thinking, you know, that's worth $300 a year, $75 a quarter, something on that nature. But you still have three options for parking. You can park in the offsite lot, so you don't have to pay this. And on weekends, the system is open. There's no enforcement on the weekends in all the other lots. So you can use your car all weekend, have fun, but then when the week comes, you need to park your car outside the campus. And then again, you have no costs associated with that. So this is the standard parking.
Mark, before you go on, quick question. New parking area will be available. That's an existing parking lot converted to a standard fee lot. Is that 170 spaces?
That's associated with the Commons development, right?
Okay, so this is 170 spaces?
That's right.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, sir.
Then for LVR, we talked about moving 100 spaces from residences back to the commuter side. And so we preserve 200 spaces for LVR residents. And to have an assigned space, now this is a guaranteed assigned space, it costs $125 a quarter. That's actually what they're paying for right now. So we're not actually talking about a change. That's just a continuation. And what would be different is those parking spaces would be pushed to the top of the deck so that it's clear those people are allowed to park there overnight. And the rest of the deck would have to empty every day so that it's enforceable from a commuter standpoint, right? Because all the commuters leave every night. So this is not really a change as much as a shift in order to push those parking spaces to one area of the deck. And that's mainly for the enforcement side of things. And then we also would introduce a premium parking permit. And this would be Lot G. Lot G is not a large lot. But if you want something that is most likely going to be available for you, there's no guarantee here, but the truth is, the number of permits that are sold will govern how tight the parking occupancy is right. There's a balance there. And so in this lot, we call that premium parking. And the suggested cost would be $125 a quarter. Now, you know, who's going to use this lot? And this is a nice area to park, although if you're not confident there's going to be a space for you, it's hard to get to, and then you'd have to back out of it if, you know, it's full. So we're trying not to make this a space or a lot where there's going to be a lot of hunting going on. That'd be rather counterproductive. But we think that there may be some students that just want that kind of service. And also, there may be some faculty members that also desire that level of convenience. And so we would open that up. This is a small step into premium parking. And the truth is, introducing a pay system is always a learning experience. You're not really sure what the whole dynamics are going to be like. And so we've got two grades here. We've got the standard parking. We've got the premium parking. This is what we think is a good way to start out that system and to see what the market is saying because this really is about market conditions. It's about that convenience and cost balance that we all have in our heads.
So what would be a ballpark figure for the number of permits for that area?
It'd be more than one, but probably not a whole lot more than one to one.
So you're going to sell, what, maybe 60 permits for those 58 spaces?
If there's a way we can sell the permits based on a known level that the number of times we expect that user to come to campus, that'd be ideal. This is where market conditions are slightly unclear. But I'd expect that it's not much more than one to make that a more clear, you know, level of service for those people.
And you're going to say $125 a quarter and a guaranteed parking space, right?
Technically correct. The intent is that you will find a space. There's just no guarantees in this world. That's what I'm saying is. And the last thing we want to do is have a lot that's not utilized very full. Because the minute you have empty spaces, you're no longer meeting your objectives of using, you know, maximizing the parking on the campus. So the goal is to make it nearly guaranteed, but there is no guarantee. You can't, you simply can't do that in a parking, both in our system.
So the two or three people share that permit?
Yeah, probably not do I.
If I've got classes on Tuesday, Thursday in the morning, and my colleague has classes Tuesday, Thursday, late afternoon, evening. And if we know a third person teaches Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, and three people for that one space?
Yeah, so that's where it takes market conditions to figure out how much more than one would be the ratio between parking spaces and sold permits. You're getting, you're right at it. You're hitting it between the eyes. But I don't think it'd be preferable to have someone actually hand off the permit to their colleague. I think it's better to, everybody gets their permits assigned to a car, and you simply oversell, I'll use that word, and that's the technical term, so that you don't cause issues. And that's where market conditions will have to dictate what that oversell is because absolutely there would be more opportunity to use that lot than just 50 new cars.
So in order to hook in seats on the airline?
Yeah. That's right. So we're trying to stay out of trouble. Nobody's trying to make more money just to make a problem for somebody else. It's part of the parking management is to find that balance. And that's really not that unusual. This is what, you know, a very high percentage of universities and colleges have to deal with. This is nothing crazy.
Just a quick question. It still seems a little high compared to other universities that they charge for, you know, pay $800 for a whole year. So where are those?
We've looked at the cost of universities in this area. Most are land constrained. Most are easily over 500. I mean, I would say 500 is...
I've gone through other campuses. I've never paid more than $100 a year for a parking. But maybe today's rates are...
I paid $1,200 a year in Alabama myself if you put up a slot.
So right now, LeFevre is the only university in quite approximately where there is zero cost.
Yeah. I can't, Georgia Tech's next to us. I'm just kind of here too.
And not that, I mean, no one's excited about paying, but the reality is, the only way to manage a system that's constrained is to reduce costs. That's the point. So this, yeah, you're right. This is $500 a year. And how many people are going to be willing to pay that? Most, the ratio of parking is not highly adverse for some parking populations. It is for others.
Right.
The market will bear what that is.
So what if no one wants to pay $500, then that might not end with me. Because the students aren't really going to be able to afford $500.
They've got plenty of money, Kathy. Trust them.
So this is the fun of introducing a...
No, we're paying for it.
So this is the fun of introducing a basis, and you're not quite sure what the institution's going to do. This is our suggestions. We haven't gotten to a finish line or nothing's been determined. But again, based on our experience of looking at what else is happening in this area, this seems like probably the ballpark that a portion of folks are willing to pay.
In every single case, there is a zero-cost option. Hey, you're going to be maybe anywhere from $100 to zero. It's choice.
Most institutions, I mean, after two children, through college, through degrees, most institutions already institute as part of your tuition fees, a parking fee. I mean, my kids went to KSHU. We paid $1,000 a semester for them to have, to park in the deck. I mean, it's not uncommon at all. And I know faculty and staff there as well also pay to have a parking space or they can move in.
This is influencing the demand of parking. And let's see, I'm sorry. Now we're looking at the Lot F, probably the most convenient lot. That would be a standard parking permit, $75 a quarter. Don't have to do this. You can park in another lot around campus. You're just going to be walking a little bit or taking the shuttle, whichever you prefer, in order to get back to the campus corner. We're also suggesting that the carpooling spots in that lot go over to Lot L. And that is just to make Lot F just dedicated commuter $75 permit, which would make it a lot easier to enforce and manage. And this would be $300 a year. That is still very reasonable for a premium space when you're looking around, you know, this area. I would say that's under market conditions if I were to simply look at what the average is. And that's not fair. I'm not trying to, you know, make LeFevre University feel like they need to act like Georgia Tech. That's not my goal here, but the truth is, both are in a land-constrained situation. Even though we're kind of out in the burbs a little bit, riverous, and they're in the, you know, the core of... So other things we can think about, the minute we're actually monitoring LVR for how many spaces are available, it's very possible to provide a little information, whether it's by, you know, some app or by sign or something like that so that you know if LVR's full and it's not worth your time to circulate up and down or to go into Lot F. And I think that's going to just, I think most people have an intuition when things are full. I'm not saying that, you know, this is going to revolutionize how people see their parking needs. But the truth is, this is information very available and it can be pushed out to you without a whole lot of infrastructure or, in this case, an app or something like that. And that may just help people get accustomed to the system faster and, you know, just a little more knowledge about wait time. So this is a summary of the different parking changes and the fees. And again, please don't get fixated on the costs. These are just our suggestions for where to start the conversation. And I'm not an expert on LeFevre University. I've seen the data. I've seen, you know, traffic and parking conditions. I've talked to staff. That's all been very helpful. But I still understand that, you know, you're the users and, you know, market conditions are something that will probably take a little more talking in order to figure out what does this really look like in terms of fees. So that's a summary. I guess I just would like to challenge you, and this isn't anything real unusual, is just think about for yourself how you do the cost and convenience equation in your head. And, you know, distributing a couple hundred dollars over the year in order to obtain that convenience is really the bottom-line question here, right? Is if you're spending $300 and you're on parking, that's about a dollar a day related to something that saves you a couple minutes, right? And that's quantifiable. I'm not trying to, you know, that's not being lazy. That's simply saying my time is worth something. And if I feel strongly about that, I'm going to, you know, reflect that in how I choose my parking options. Thank you. And shall we open questions?
Can you put a slide back up where you have the different parking lots and what would be to push different?
It is, you know, I'm an engineer, so I'm always looking at things from an area perspective. I just kind of, you know, live on Google Earth. You know, that's how I learn. But if you're living, you know, on the surface, you do, it's really interesting to kind of take a look at this. And to me, it's telling the, that circle, that truly is five minutes. To me, that is really awesome and is a massive asset to this. And to me, it kind of neutralizes the parking discussion a little bit because even the worst parking space is still honestly really, really good. If you were just to compare this to your trip to the mall, you're probably doing better off here than parking, you know, at the mall and walking through everything to get to your destination. Because, you know, it's still coming to your areas.
I have a question. This is Mark. I'm a student here. And I live in my parking, I don't know what the letter is, but out by the dog park. And I knew that was a fine lot, the shelter came and everything like that. Is there a way for us to somehow obtain this parking through the county that manages that, has free parking for students?
We can have a discussion. You're saying the county park?
It's a dog park, I think.
Wildwood. Wildwood?
Yeah.
It's a quarter mark in South Palm.
It's the case.
Yes. And we used to have parking there in the shuttle. It used to come. But now since it's under, you know, we have our construction things there, right next to K, there is a dog park. And there's only two or three cars parked there at a time. So I don't know if it's because we can't monitor that area, is it because, you know, the law's to the county? I don't know how that works.
Well, if it's not owned by, you know, LeFevre University, there'd have to be some discussion.
It's not about the city of Marietta. Well, isn't there discussion if we park and ride somewhere else?
If they've done our advisement, we can see if there's, you know, value in talking to the city of Marietta.
How old is it going moving forward as far as, so just think of logistics. If you want to sell a G lot, and we're selling, you know, $300 a year, maybe $500 a year, which I'm obviously here for the people. I'm always hoping they would pay more than that, but that's made of your layer. You're always going to have people, but hello. But to oversell that lot and to kind of go along with what they were saying, and we, we're the logistics as far as, we've never seen anybody sell like a, if I want to buy on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, because those are my seven-to-five process, and then Tuesday, Thursday is, you know, I've got a 1 to 11. So I'm going to underparking that day. So instead of paying the full price, and then that opens that, you know, those two days up for purchase for somebody else. Instead of passing the, you know, take it along, I have a stamp that's, you know, got Monday, Wednesday, Friday locked out of it. And now I can park there those days. Somebody else gets it those days. Have you ever looked at something like that? Is that too complex that they would set up overselling?
It is certainly an additional complexity. It may be worth it. It probably comes down to the simplicity of the class schedule and whether, you know, the average person can really do that. Or, you know, there are some sets of people that really complement each other and how much those two complement each other probably be the answer whether it's worth it. And that would probably get us into looking at class data and the students that are in those classes.
I was kind of looking at, instead of, you know, security got this, instead of selling permits, they sold days. So if they sold 16 days, Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, when I walk in there, it's kind of first come, first served. I can say, hey, is there any Monday, Wednesday, Fridays left? And they go, well, we got a Monday and a Friday.
Yeah.
You know, so...
You know, if you want to take that to the next level, you could have a system that simply recognizes the number of parking days. Doesn't matter what they are. You simply get 15, 20, 30, whatever you want to park close. And that just requires a system that can accommodate. And there would be benefits to that. I think people enjoy paying for what they define as a benefit instead of, oh, it's all or nothing, you know, that kind of thing. So that's certainly a possibility of just be, you know, another step of complexity for the system. But it's definitely a possibility. Yes?
I have two, actually. In the beginning, you brought up the total operating budget currently based on our free parking model. Some were being in the area of $600,000. Have you guys done a forecast, a cash flow to see if you do fill these spots based on what your current estimation is right now? How much above and beyond, obviously this prime cover, the operating cost, how much above and beyond would you be raising? And if you are raising money, what is your strategic plan on future? Because this is all short-term, you said.
Right.
So is there already a strategic plan in place for parking decks in other places that's more satisfying? Sort of how is this, where is the money going to be used to be raised essentially?
So I would say that hasn't advanced very... So, I would say that hasn't advanced very far. You, you can certainly do some math between the number of spaces in the lot, and the permits, and that's not crazy. But, um, the, the, the bigger questions are, um, well, first of all, parking decks, let's, let's talk about that. If you build, uh, three hundred spaces of parking deck, at twenty thousand in space, that's six million dollars. And, you know, that's not a fantastic amount of money, but that is a lot of parking. So that's where I think it goes back to Bill's comment of, that is a solution out there, but it is, that's why enough, you know, why the G. It's, it's just, it is, we need to try other things first to manage the system before engaging that. Then, then the other part of your question, I think, is, you know, how close to self-funding is this, or what is that? And, and the truth is, um, that's gonna depend on how incentivized you want to build a program. I haven't done a survey, but my guess is, less than five percent of the population comes to campus outside of a car, by transit, not motorized. Just my guess, we can talk about that later. For a campus like this, it is not unusual to have fifty to twenty percent of people coming not in a car. Now, there are unique things around this campus, and you have to always keep that in mind. But the truth is, I think there's a pretty good dent that could be managed through some of these, uh, demand suppressing costs, aspects, as well as implementing some additional programs and incentivizing. And the question is, is how much of the cost goes to incentivize? And there's no right answer to that, I'm not here to say it's all, we're, we're going to, you know, no. This is very dependent on the population and what the overall culture of it is. But the first step is to create the culture of, here's a menu of options. It's not like it's the parking people, and then those of you that choose otherwise. No, we want to handle this so that if you choose something other than a car, there would be a benefit for you somewhere, and we just need to figure out, how does that work? And it's complicated, this isn't easy stuff, but every car you can push off the campus is going to, you know, be a parking station.
Oh, many institutions, and I just K S U lot, because I'm just most familiar with them, but I know many institutions have a freshman program where pure freshmen have to park the furthest away. Are we looking at instituting something like that?
I think that's already been determined.
Right.
Yeah, so, uh, is this, that's okay to say?
Would you guys use two thousand, like, plans to use your freshmen?
With one there, and then they want off-campus, their additional freshmen to choose not to live on campus.
But not to, yeah, it's not parking.
If they have a car, they would have to park in the remote lot, or go home.
Not to say that we couldn't just class schedules to manage the status quo, um, but, you know, what you haven't addressed is that, um, you know, we're getting by, you know, just fine with the status quo, and, you know, I guess the question is, at what point, in terms of student population and faculty-staff population, you know, what's, what's the, what's the threshold for forcing us to do something, you know, like this? Has anybody thought about that or rejected it? Uh, because, you know, you, you're only talking for two days, where apparently it's peak demand, and during a limited number of hours. And why couldn't that be managed, you know, by, by scheduling? Scheduling the classes or events, uh, rather than changing the status quo. And you've got five, five other days of the week where things are just fine, it's just those two days, right? So, you know, can't that problem be, be solved by somebody managing, uh, through the scheduling of classes? And, and, you know, again, the, the, the crucial question is, what's the threshold at which, you know, with student population and faculty-staff population, that we are going to have to do something like this?
So I think, uh-
And as far as I know, as far as I know, you know, the status quo is not gonna change by default of two thousand eighteen, in, in terms of numbers of students and faculty.
The level of fine-grained assessment here, I don't think allows me to give you a really precise answer. Uh, I think that, um, you know, two days of the week being a problem isn't just, uh, that's, that's getting a bit much for just calling a special event. And maybe we could, maybe we could solve it through special event, um, applications. Yeah, we require testing it, and, and I've, I've suggested that when we know there's gonna be a big day, maybe we, we advertise, uh, the remote lot, maybe we incentivize reverse commuting via the shuttle, and let's see what that looks like. Because, like I said, the university's collecting data virtually every day, so we could measure and get feedback pretty quickly on the depth of use.
Just allowing it per quarter, is that two words, like, one quarter I can choose to park in that lot, and then the next quarter I decide I choose it again? Or there will be a change for some of the, the-
I expect so, because you pay on quarter, right, you go through the, the, the process of, of registering, and that kind of thing, quarter, it's sort of, it would be a registration selection option.
As far as the students?
Will that be added to tuition costs, or be added by student loans, and depends on that, or is that expected to be, uh, student?
It's a bit like any other V A, like the university, I guess I don't know.
We have the charges where, uh, like, financially, or you can't afford it, so that's our, you know. Those are, if you happen to make that selection, first term. Right now, do you have any questions?
Given that no decisions have been made, the, the question can be handled anyways, my sense is it would just be like registering for classes, and you check the box, I want that permit.
Are you part of, do you hear lots off-campus and there's plenty of location?
So there's a hundred spots right now, that's, um, you know, it's not being used heavily right now. It would seem to me that implementing these demand suppressing items, and better utilization of that offsite during the peak times, would not require us to not, you wouldn't have to find more caterer lots.
I think that caterer lots are great for people that are on that side of the city. I mean, commuting in the mornings and that means it's really tough, so for those of us coming in the right way, that can add on in two thirty minutes, just to get to and from that lot.
So we'd hope that the people coming in the right direction would be very attracted to it. All we need is to fill a hundred spaces, it's, I don't sense that as a, it takes some advertising, but I don't sense that as a major challenge. And therefore, as long as a hundred cars fill it up, I don't care which hundred it is.
Hey, is there security over at that lot for all these cars parked over there?
Yes.
There is security in that lot?
So you said there's gonna be a hundred going for an L V R offsite, is that not the lot they're going to?
If L V R residences don't want to pay for parking, then they have the option of parking in the remote lot, they don't have to, they don't have to.
So you're not making a hundred go elsewhere, that's just the goal, is to get a hundred to go.
That's right.
If a hundred of them have lots in a longer permit, what could they get?
They could, uh, buy a permit, a standard permit, that doesn't guarantee you a space, but it would give them on campus if they wanted to. So they do have a couple options, they're not banned from having a car, they can lose options otherwise.
Yes? But, um, I want to cover that, but we have more than one, one student parking, and was like six, ten, or like six staff, or faculty spots available. How many excess faculty spots are on campus right now, that could maybe absorb some of this load? You know, if we do an, uh, either an auction, or a lottery every quarter, to fill those staff spots, um, would that help lighten up, you know, all this?
The numbers I've looked at indicate that the staff part of the parking is, is at least at ninety percent, if not a little bit more. And the, the truth is, is success is a hundred percent occupancy. That's when you have a problem, is when you're at a hundred percent. Actually, a useful system is at about ninety to ninety-five percent occupied, else you're in the significant un situation. So, we're not far at all, but there, there's very little headroom in, in the space here that you're talking about, or available.
Well, I know, because I, I park it there for general life. Uh, O lot, which is a faculty lot, there's been many days of parking, and J lot has been completely filled, and there's only fifty percent at O lot, and we get typically parked in there because I asked. Because of O, because everything else is just completely full, and I already circled twenty minutes on campus trying to find a square park. So, I, I consistently see Lot O always having availability.
Uh, the, the shuttle operations, if this were to take place, and we start placing students up from that core section, right, and moving them further out, are they on for very early? Especially in the mornings, um, I mean, curious, my kids, because I heard people circle around, there's a lot more cars and that kind of thing, so I just know that there's-
We are working diligently to, to improve the timing and performance of the shuttle schedules, and we'll see some, some big events coming up the next six days.
And will they run early enough?
They will start at six A M.
And that would be like on off-campus?
On off-campus, personally, that would be at six A M, at the off-campus part. And we'll have two shuttles running in the mornings, that's the current rate.
The current shuttle utilization is awful. So it's expensive, and utilization is not a part of it, because of what you described, you are building the cheaper schedules. We're looking at the whole.
How late is the shuttle, bud?
Until last, that would be at seven thirty.
What time is the plan for the call? Seven?
I'm sorry.
I think we're one of the only places that have trouble with the shuttle, I've always been for the shuttle. That's because we're open to lot, you know. I think those other places are all supposed to. I should ask me the lot, right?
Since this is still proposed by your agency, um, do we know when the university will make an additional decision, or do we can expect to see that?
We've got one additional, uh, town hall, and simplistic size, everything, and a lot of, uh, plan, for anything we can call that. But everybody who's been at it, many times, people can just call it. But also, anything we do, we gotta be able to implement and monitor, so this is six to eight. Yes, what was that, you got it? No, uh, the only thing I've got is, thanks. Input's valuable at this stage, I appreciate it from everybody in the audience.
This is a small assignment, as, I mean, I work here in a lot of schools, but I think that the bike aid is really good. We're very helpful on this security, especially with parking lots that are further off, I think it's good.